But I'm happy to sit in for him and introduce Britta Johnson today. She's a filmmaker who is a Seattle-based stop-motion animator. She makes short films and video installations and has directed music videos for bands including, is it Lucine?
Mm-hmm.
Lucine, Andrew Bird, and Minus the Bear. Her film collaborations with musicians have shown in places including Seattle's Henry Art Gallery, On the Boards, Giant Magnet, is it Picas TBA Festival?
Mm-hmm.
And the Walker Art Center, Mass MoCA, and the Boston Museum of Fine Arts. And she will tell you a little bit about the film we're about to see.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for having me. It's an honor to be here. The film I'm going to show is an excerpt from a nine-minute film called Waterway. It was commissioned by the Seattle Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs and funded by SP's 1% for Arts in conjunction with the Restore Our Waters program. And it was part of a group of films that were commissioned and a greater part of a series called Water Calling that were all about water in the city. And my film has to do with natural drainage systems, like the Sea Streets program in Carke and the Suel on Yale that replace sort of more traditional infrastructure with, sort of piping infrastructure, with kind of a series of rocks and dirt and things like that in order to slow down water and reduce pollutants going into the sound. So that's the film.
Great. Well, thank you.
And it's a nine-- sorry, it's a nine-minute piece. I believe we'll be seeing a one-minute excerpt.
That's right, yeah.
Just one minute?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Actually, on the Seattle Channel website, there's the full nine minutes. And then on my Vimeo page, there's a five-- there's several versions. There's a five-minute version, too.
Frank, can we get one of those versions on our website?
Sure, I'm sure we can if you would allow it.
Oh, totally, of course.
Great, we'll do that. We'll have it on our website as well, then.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for joining us.
And would you tell us the name again for those who might want to go to the Seattle Channel website? What are we looking for?
It was called Waterway, the film is. And it's part of-- the program is Water Calling. So there were, like I said, there were five films. And it was shown in two different chunks.
So you're saying Water Calling or Column?
Calling. Water Calling is the series.
Good, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for joining us, Britta. Appreciate it.
It was a pleasure.
Thank you, Britta.
I brought Drew Christie today. Drew is an animator here in town. He's won numerous awards. And in fact, was just with the film that we'll show today was just at the Sundance Film Festival. So Drew, if you want to say something about the film before it?
Yeah, the movie you're going to see is a short animated film. It's only four minutes long, and it's called Song of the Spindle. And it's basically a conversation between a guy who looks surprisingly like me and a sperm whale. And it kind of starts as an argument about who's smarter, and it kind of ends up going in a lot of different directions: neurology, evolution, all sorts of things. So I hope you guys enjoy it.
I'm a whale. Not to brag, but my brain is really, really big.
And I'm a human. My brain is really big, too. In fact, us humans are so smart, we can drive around in climate-controlled automobiles, talking to each other on smartphones from hundreds of miles away while eating food that we didn't have to hunt ourselves on the way to our comfortable homes we didn't even build ourselves.
Well, okay, okay. We don't really have cars or stuff like that, and we do have to hunt for our food, so that's kind of a bummer. But we also don't drop bombs on each other or poison each other with chemicals or use of all the resources on the whole planet.
Whoa, you didn't have to get so personal.
I'm sorry, that was rude of me. I just think you can't really judge intelligence by technology alone. After all, what is the wisdom of destroying the very planet you need to survive? I don't want to be pushy or overly sensitive, but I think humans could really learn something from us whales.
All right, I got a little bit of free time here in between my Facebook updates, my Twitter feeds, my blog posts, my downloads.
Okay, well, whales are part of the Order Cetacean. This includes all whales, dolphins, and porpoises. The name Cetacean comes from the Greek ketos, meaning large fish or sea monster. There are many types of cetaceans: the humpback whale, blue whale, right whale, whale, whaling whale, dolphin, narwhal whale, gray whale, orca, spinner dolphin, pilot whale, beluga, harbor porpoise, spectacled porpoise, and of course, the great sperm whale, which was hunted for its oil throughout the 18th, 19th, and even 20th centuries.
I'm sorry about the whaling.
Have you read Moby Dick?
Well, I started it, but--
It's okay. I'm told that no human can read the whole thing. Anyways, we understand what you guys are going through because we used to live on land, too. Millions of years ago, we had hooves and walked around, and we were more or less hippos. Finding more food in the sea than on land, we slowly ventured further out into the water and through the magic of evolution, certain genetic traits were selected naturally: good body, hind legs. Our bodies became longer and more streamlined. Us cetaceans have lungs for breathing air, give birth, we nurse our young, and we live in family units. You know, we're really not so different, you and I. We both have big brains, a good sense of humor, we like going on vacation in Hawaii.
Definitely.
We share something else, too, something more elemental. Deep within both our brains lies an electrically charged cell that processes and transmits information. This is called a neuron. And deep within the anterior cingulate cortex of these big brains is a neuron known as a spindle neuron. This is the neuron that is responsible for compassion and understanding as well as pitch with regard to sound and song. You humans like music, don't you?
Yeah, my iPod's on shuffle right now. I've got about 4,000 songs in this one: Mumford Sons, Fleet Foxes.
Anyways, the fact that both humans and cetaceans make music seems to be the most powerful of all the similarities between our two species. Music is not only a form of communication or entertainment, it's more mystical and unexplainable than that. It's the harnessing of energy waves in a certain frequency range and the organization of that energy into sounds. As Plato said, "Rhythm and harmony find their way into the inner places of the soul." I think that if humans sang as much as us whales, they could resolve many of the issues that plague them now. I'm not saying the world would turn around overnight, but the beginning of a new consciousness might emerge and allow for drastically different approaches to all issues confronting the human race. Think of wars were resolved through music or long-form song poems explaining the grievances of both sides, let alone the positive impact it could have on interpersonal relationships and conflict resolution on a local or family level.
Actually, I do feel a lot more relaxed when I'm listening to music.
You should really try to actually have a conversation with someone through song and music alone.
All right, I'll try it.
I'm not saying you humans need to grow fins and move to the ocean. Just try and sing more, learn the Song of the Spindle. Not only will it sound wonderful, it just might save the world.
Thank you, Drew.
Thanks.
Very nice. So I hope you go on and make more, more movies.
Did you get recognized at Sundance for that?
I didn't win any awards there, but it got a really great reception, and I talked with a lot of nice people about it, and they liked it, so.
Well, it's good that you even got that, right?
Yeah, I liked it.
Big honor, even though. Nice job.
Oh, you did, no?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very nice, Drew. I really enjoyed that.
Thank you.
I didn't realize that this committee was so much fun, that you got movies.
Next time, popcorn. And we've got Adam Secure. And you introduced the film and the director today, right? I mean, he's not here, but you have a statement from him.
Well, I'll just talk a little bit about the film, and he's issued a statement because the council's been kind enough to issue some sort of proclamation for him, which will be coming on Monday. So he'll have an official statement at that time. But the clip today is from a film called Undefeated, which won the Academy Award this year for documentary. One of the filmmakers, TJ Martin, is a native of Seattle here and graduate, of course, of Roosevelt High School in 1997 and then Western Washington University. This is his second feature film and his first Academy Award. He's very grateful that you were able to include the film here. And we're actually over at the Northwest Film Forum where I work. We're having him this Sunday. If anybody's interested in coming out to meet him, he'll be there from 5:00 until 7:00. So it's kind of an open house to welcome him back to town. He's living in Los Angeles now. So here is a clip from Undefeated.
What time are we supposed to be in?
At 2:23, I walk in and everybody's late. It's exactly what I'm talking about. It's exactly what I'm talking about. This is how we lose games, because y'all can't follow simple directions. All right, so here's what we got. Go ahead, I got it from here, Money. First thing we're gonna do, do not watch your playbooks, watch the film. All right, here's Neil. Max, listen to me. Max, what's about to start? Stop, stop. What is y'all's problem?
Man, man. Stop playing me, bro.
What is y'all's problem? You go over there, Money.
Stop playing me.
Go over there, Money.
Stop playing.
Man, boy, what?
You shut up.
Man, yo-- I just told him to shut up. You go sit down. Sit. Money? Sit.
Be quiet, man.
Go sit down over there. Go. Don't touch one another.
Hey, crazy. Man ain't crazy.
Shut up. Did you hear me? Money? Money! Y'all killing me. You're sucking it right out of me. I got four children, a home, and a wife. My kids, my own son's first football game is in an hour and a half, and I'm here with you. My business didn't make any money, and I'm still spending my money on you. Y'all ain't giving nothing back. You just take it. You ain't giving me shit. You just taking it. Now you, you're going to apologize.
He say anything I'm a found in, I'm just letting you know. If he get out of hand, I'm slapping.
Well, you know what's gonna happen? Of course he's gonna say something, because he's pissed.
I'm slappy, dude.
No, you're not.
Watch.
Listen to me. No, you're not. You know why? Because I just asked you to. You think I want to deal with this shit right now? I'm trying to get y'all prepared.
Gay, that man putting his hand around--
He is not gay.
I think he is.
Okay, then keep your thoughts to yourself. He ain't gay.
I'ma tell him when I say you gay, don't come around.
Chavis, you, for the betterment of somebody other than yourself, need to do what I'm asking you to do. It's not part of the job description. Of course, I don't know really what the job description is, frankly. You want to tell me you're sorry for not coming when I called you?
Sorry, sir.
I know you are. It pissed me off, too. I appreciate you getting away from him and not springing when I told you not to. You backed off, did what you knew, and you left because you were hot. You're not going to turn back, you're on the team. You're going to come back with me right now. Listen to me. Listen to me. Look at me. You're going to come back with me right now, and you are not going to get in a fight with him. And listen to me. And he is not going to get in a fight with you. And you're going to put the team before yourself, and you're going to be a man.
Yes, sir.
And you're going to put it behind you. And he's going to be a man, and he's going to put it behind you. And our team is not going to be torn apart by stupidity, because we're not going to let it.
Yes, sir.
Will you do that for me?
Yes, sir.
What, were y'all arguing over the armrests?
I don't know. He up there playing, he sitting in the mud with me.
Just don't sit next to him.
I thought we was friends or something.
Hey, listen. Can you say that to him? Why not? Say, "Chavis, yeah, I'm mad, but it hurt me because I thought we were friends. I thought we were just friends." Get your shit, let's go.
Well, I can see why it won the Academy Award for a feature-length documentary. It's very powerful.
Thanks again, Nick, for inviting me out to screen some local work. Today, I brought Robert Lawson, who's a co-director of a film called Christiana: Forty Years of Occupation. Robert completed the documentary production certificate program at the University of Washington in 2005, and his student documentary KL Shannon: My Fight II was featured in the Langston Hughes African-American Film Festival. Since then, his documentary work has garnered grants from the City of Seattle's Office of Cultural Affairs and King County's Poor Culture. And Robert shares videography duties with Rich Jackman, who's the other co-director on this project. He's also the editor of Number Eight Productions. I'm going to let Robert say a few words, and then we'll see the clip.
All right. Thank you for inviting me here to do this today. This is a clip from a film that we've been working on since 2006. We've visited Cristania four times to film, the last time being just last September. And so we're in the post-production process now. We're looking to finish the film and release it in the beginning of 2013.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, let's see what we have. Frank, are you going to get the lights over there? Oh.
In a way, it was good that it was so empty, because we could put our spirit in there. It was like being born again, and I think it was for many people like that.
Cristania is officially for the legalization of marijuana and ashes, but all chemical drugs are banned and you are thrown out.
In the very start, there was a policeman going around on a bicycle, and his job was to take care of Cristania.
Firebombs, rocks, and tear gas rained down on Cristania, an area of Copenhagen that is partially self-governed. Protesters set fire to barricades and pelted the police with firebombs and rocks. Police responded with tear gas. The community in Cristania was founded in the 1970s, when dozens of hippies occupied a derelict 18th-century fort on state-owned land on the outskirts of Copenhagen. Over the last few years, the government has moved to regulate the so-called Free State of Cristania. Vanessa Heaney, BBC News.
You know, it's one of the very few places in the world where one can experience living in a community on a large scale, you know, about 1,000 people. You don't see that many places around the world, especially not in a community that operates on consensus democracy. In the beginning, I mean, it started like a no-money society.
All in all, we have to deliver 76 million crowns for the part of Christiana that we are buying, and still every year we have to pay six or seven million crowns in rent. To put it very short, now we have to pay double to be allowed to do half of what we used to do.
But of course, giving so much money is another slavery. So I don't know how this is going to end.
Thank you very much. That was very interesting. I hope you finish your film and get it released in local theaters.
I certainly hope so, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Today, we are delighted to have Megan Griffiths with us today. Megan's been making films for 10 years. She's worked as a writer, director, producer in the independent film world. And her latest feature, Eden, which we're going to see an excerpt of today, stars Jamie Chung, Matt O'Leary, and Beau Bridges, and premiered at the 2012 South by Southwest Film Festival. It's also showing currently at the Seattle International Film Festival. The film received the South by Southwest Audience Award, and Megan was awarded the Chicken and Egg Pictures Emergent Female Directing Prize. And her previous feature, The Off Hours, premiered at the 11 Sundance Film Festival and went on to screen at festivals around the globe and secure distribution through the film movement. So Megan, if you'd like to say something to introduce the film in particular?
Sure. So Eden is a film that was shot almost entirely in Washington State. We shot in August, in September of last year. Washington is playing the character of Nevada in the film. The film is actually set in the southwest, but Washington actually is an unbelievably good double. And I'm based here and wanted to shoot the film here. The producer, Colin Plank, is also based here. So the two of us really tried hard to get the, you know, make the film happen within Washington, and we were able to work with Washington Film Works to get our film incentive, and that really was what sealed the deal in terms of shooting here. And so I'm going to show a clip that is about three minutes, I think. And to set it up a little bit, basically Eden is a story that's based on a true story of a woman named Chong Kim who was abducted and held outside of Las Vegas for over three or over two years by a human trafficking organization. And it's a survival story. She was able to escape eventually by gaining the trust of her captors. And Chong, whose story it's based on, collaborated on the script and was a big part of the production and has seen the film and is really happy with the way it turned out. And so the clip that I'm going to show, Jamie Chung, who plays the lead character in the film, is waking up for the first time in the storage facility where she will be held captive. And she's been sort of drugged, and she's a little out of it. And this is sort of her experiencing this new universe that she's been sort of unwillingly thrown into.
So Megan--
I want to ask a question for you.
Yeah, me, too. Megan, I read about this in the paper just a few days ago.
Yeah.
Do you know what the schedule is, when it's playing and where?
It's already had two screenings at SIF. It played on Saturday at the Egyptian and then last night, Monday night at the Uptown. And then it has one more screening in Everett at the Everett Performance Center a week from, actually, next Tuesday. I forget, the 30th, I think, at 8:30 PM.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Megan, how long is the film, and where is this clip relative to the length of the film?
It is a 90, I think, 96-minute running time for the whole film, and this is probably 15, 20 minutes? Oh, it's close, 13 minutes in. And it's, so it's, we've sort of seen, we've established her pre-abduction life, where she, we see her, she's Korean-American, and her parents own a taxidermy shop, and she's working for her mother's sort of, we've sort of seen her relationship with her parents. She's snuck out to a bar with a fake ID with a friend and goes on with the wrong person. And that's where, what leads her to where we see her, here.
I like it in detail. Yeah.
Oops, no sound. Standby, sound. Needs some sound.
As Frank figures that out-- Megan, is there hair? Is that just a bad angle that her hair has been shaved or something?
There's a, yeah, you'll be able to see more when it's playing, but it's blood. It's sort of-- Sounds like volume. Oops. I'll start this.
Wow. That is really powerful.
Very strong.
Thank you.
I hope that you get a distributor to release the movie nationally, so this way we can, more people can see it.
Yeah, it's been, so far, it hasn't screened, we've only screened at two festivals, the South by Southwest in Austin and then SIF. And it's been getting a really excellent response from press and audience, and so we're working on distribution, and hopefully that'll, we'll have some news on that soon. But right now, we're still sort of talking to people.
Please let my office know what happens down the road. Please let my office know what, what happens down the road, if you'd like to pass the word on.
Will do.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Thanks, everybody. I appreciate it.
Adam Sekulow will go ahead and introduce our filmmaker today.
I'm going to apologize for you. There's a, seems to be some small technical problem with the sound here.
Oh, can't get audio.
So why don't I tell you a little bit about the filmmakers? I brought with me today Tracy Rector and Lou Carson, and they're from Long House Media, it's a Native American youth filmmaking organization located up on Capitol Hill. We're going to be showing a clip from a project that they just started working on. They're actually doing some fundraising for, it's called Clear Water, and I'll let them kind of expand on what that project is, so.
Adam, before you get going, is somebody coming to help us with the audio?
Yeah.
My impression.
Okay, good, because we don't want you to be short-changed on this. I want to hear what you have to say.
And how much time do I have to, how much time do I have to talk?
Until Eric arrives. Until audiovisual arrives.
And Tracy, use the little, the little green light on there. There's a gray button halfway up the stem.
Is that better? Oh, there we go. Okay. So I'm Tracy Rector. I'm the executive director of Long House Media. We are a native-run nonprofit organization. We're seven and a half years old. We started on the Swinmish Reservation, and we have offices on Capitol Hill at Northwest Film Forum. We run youth programs, and we also produce films in the Seattle and Pacific Northwest regions. Today, we're showing a clip called Clear Water, and it's about the health of Puget Sound and the issue of ocean acidification, specifically the Saquamish and Cosalish peoples' relationship to the water. So we're doing some investigation with Saquamish youth. We're doing community surveys about people's experiences and knowledge of what ocean acidification is and the impacts that it has on our shellfish industry and culture. And we're also telling stories of the people who are most impacted by the change in the water and the resources.
How many students or filmmakers actually worked on this particular...
Sure. On this clip, we worked with a classroom at Saquamish High School, and we had, gosh, I think there's 20 students altogether in our classroom. We took a group of five students to Washington DC that actually present this in front of Congress. So we worked with them on research skills, presenting skills, and being able to express how science impacts culture. So it's been a large process of community development and awareness, but now it's turning into a feature film. I'm a Sundance Fellow with this project, so we're having backing from them in guidance and support. So it's really exciting to have eyes on the Pacific Northwest region in Seattle.
Perfect. How, how long's the whole feature?
The feature will be one hour, and we're shooting for a PBS showing. Our last film was called March Point, and that showed on Independent Lens, so we're hoping for the same sort of distribution.
So this was, have you finished the whole?
No, we're just starting. We're, right now, we're in the beginning stages of production, and we are, what you'll see here is a short video that we have on our Kickstarter campaign, which is a crowdsourcing funding network. So it's funding by the people for the people. People pledge like $25, and that helps towards the production of the film. So we're in development and production at the same time right now.
So all 20 students participate in making the film?
Yeah, it was part of a classroom project in partnership with the Seattle Aquarium and Saquamish Fisheries. So we did research on the water and investigation within the community, and then presenting with the elders. So research had everything to do, the Seattle Aquarium would bring in, you know, how do we do water samples? Or the fisheries would take us down to the hatcheries and show us the change in shellfish larvae. Or we would help the students bring cameras to the elders to ask questions about what it was like when they were young and what they experienced in terms of changes on the beach and in the water.
So how's our audiovisual tech doing here?
Well, you know, in our process of troubleshooting that weird, uh, poppy sound, we turned all the audio off somehow, and we can't get it back on.
Is it plugged in?
I think it's going to try doing a sync up here.
Might be a little out of sync, but I'm going to attempt this.
Today, I have a story of Clear Water with you. Lou Carson and myself are co-directing this documentary film about the Saquamish relationship to the water of Puget Sound. It's going to be a great journey, and we ask that you join us in telling this story and sharing this important information. We began research on this story as a project called Our Home with the Saquamish youth at the Heritage School and the Seattle Aquarium. And in this short film, we began the process of learning just what, what climate change means to the tribe and the impacts of ocean acidification.
You guys are like angels of inspiration and enlightenment, so we need the country to listen to you.
When people are in the same place for thousands and thousands and thousands of years, 10,000, 14,000 years, there's, the knowledge they get from observing nature is, is really indescribable. Huge percentage of their population has been wiped out by disease. They've lost their lands. They were denied access to their fishing and hunting for 100 years, and they just now regained it. And now those fishing and hunting and the rights to gather shellfish are jeopardized because the very chemistry of the water itself is changing.
When I think of the word clear water, I think about diving under the water and looking at octopuses and flounders and, and seeing cleanliness and feeling that. Flounders and, and seeing cleanliness and feeling that when I'm working in the water. I think about the words of Chief...
That may be it.
That, that might be it. So essentially, we're seeking, we're in the production phase and seeking funding for this project, and we're working with the Saquamish tribe and tribal peoples in the Puget Sound to tell this story.
Well, I can tell, I'm glad you had brought the students into the film, and I take it the documentary includes them throughout, the making of the film as well?
It's going to be a job opportunity, so they'll be part of the community surveys, but we'll also be paying them, for example, summer stipends to work on the film.
Excellent. That's great. Well, thank you very much for sharing it. Best of luck in getting it distributed and finished.
Thank you so much.
Today, I brought a group of filmmakers from Real Girls, which is a really great organization on 19th and Union, and they're educating young women about the process of filmmaking. To my left is Miley Martinez. She's the program manager there, and I'm going to have her introduce the filmmakers.
Hi. I also brought Betsy Brock, who's our director of external affairs, and I also want to introduce you to a few of our young program participants who created the film that we're going to show you today. This is Dani Tyara and Summer Matthews. And Dani, I was hoping you could tell us just a little bit about While We're Asleep and how it was made.
Yeah. While We're Asleep is a short film about children and their dreams, what's happening while they're...
You have to speak a little louder, right? And you can move these rates, they're movable. There you go.
It's a short film about children and their dreams and what happens while they're sleeping. I was animator for the project, and I also played a hand in sound design, editing, and filming.
And Summer, can you tell us what you did on the project?
Yeah, it was a collaboration with, we worked with two other filmmakers, and I was lead director in it, as well as editing and other aspects of it as well.
Okay.
I think with that, we can show you the clip.
And well, little lights. There you go.
I open my eyes for about 40 minutes, and then I go to sleep. What helps me to go to sleep? Thinking about the next day. I think about the next day, like if it's the night before Friday, I'm just like thinking about how much fun it's going to be.
I sleep up, and he sleeps down, too. That's beautiful.
There were some Lego farmers, and some pigs were trying to eat their house, so they built a catapult and a brick wall, and they started throwing the pigs at the brick wall with the catapult.
I was famous, and I was at Hollywood. And then, like, I got fired, and then I had to go to jail.
I know I've been having dreams, but now most of them are like nightmares.
I was fighting aliens on a shuttle, and then I'm like in a crash and going to a hole.
I was with some creatures. That one's pretty interesting, because I kept on having it night after night after night.
I was in the crocodile exhibit, and it was like feeding time, and when I was leaving, the crocodile actually snuck out of its cage and went after me. I was on the highway with my dad in a car. I was on a bridge, and there was just this gigantic monster chasing after us, destroying everything in its path. And then my dad suddenly disappeared, and the car stopped, and I couldn't get out of the car. And then, like, I realized, okay, it's just a dream. Cool it.
I think a dream is when there's action in your brain, and you're like dreaming if you're famous.
Sort of realistic fiction, if you know what I mean.
A mind's video, like in the evening of the brain, so it's watching it, like in the evening till, like, right before bed, and then, like, at a certain point in the night, the dream sometimes ends, and then the brain goes to bed. It's kind of like a dream. It's like a video that your brain is watching inside of you.
I didn't get that, but...
Not a single bit.
But since your brain is what controls you, you actually feel it all over your body.
Before the next day, you're like, what's my dream going to be out tonight? And then it's going to be about whatever you imagine. So it's pretty much a surprise for your brain.
I think you have dreams because you need something to happen while you're asleep.
I wanted to let you know that the film was just recently selected for the Citizen Jane Film Festival, and another one of their teammates, another filmmaker, is going to be traveling to St. Louis, Missouri to accompany the film to the film festival with their mentor, so really proud of her.
How long is the film itself?
The whole film, it's about seven minutes.
Oh, seven minutes, great. Well, best of luck. It was enjoyable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.